Okay. Inshallah, we'll go ahead and start. Bismillah, Rahman, Rahimah, alhamdulillah, Rabbul A'lemin. Wa salatu wa salam ala rasoolil amin wa ala ali wa shahbi ajma'in. Allahumma la ilma lana illa ma alamtana inna anta ala'iimun hakim. Allahumma alimna bima yinfaana wa anfaana bima alamtana wazidna ilma. So again, for those that are online, just if it's your first time, we pray Al Muzaffarat at 2 o'clock. And by the time, we're just gonna get everybody together and come to the room. Again, we're starting a little bit late, but inshallah, we'll try to... The plan for today, inshallah, is to finish chapter 2 from our book. And there's a surprise at the end, inshallah, hopefully everybody would like, I hope. So, starting in chapter 2. Where that's when the Sheikh starts talking about the history of Shaytaan, right? What happened, and you know, Jin and the angels, what happened? So, if we start from the beginning. Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala created the Jin and the angels, a long, long time ago. And Shaytaan, or Iblis, was with the angels. He was very righteous. He obeyed Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. He listened to whatever Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala wanted him to do. And Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala elevated him to the level of the angels. And one quick point, if we remember. The verse in page 10 in our booklet, where Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala telling the angels that he's about to put a Khalifa on earth. Right? He's about to put mankind on earth. And then they replied, and they said, "Well, are you gonna put somebody who's gonna shed blood and cause corruption?" Now, the question here is, how did they know? Right? And Sheikh talked a little bit about that. And Imam Ibn Kathir said that some of the scholars narrated the fact that there were Jin before the human beings were around, and they shed blood. And they caused corruption on earth, and that's why the angels knew that. That's one understanding. The other understanding is there was just a prediction of what will happen with the mankind after they were born. So, if we look at the enmity that started, right? Why does Shaytaan hate humans so much? And again, we mentioned he was with the angels, he obeyed Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. And... So, Imam Ibn Taymiya said that most certainly, Iblis was not from the angels. So, you know, for some people that might say he was from the angels, he was not from the angels. However, his behavior put him at the level of the angels. Again, this is before this whole incident was prostrating to Adam and so on. And again, they were on for thousands of years. Now, when Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala created the angels. Allah subhanahu, you know, some of our scholars, they say that when Iblis saw that, right? He started having hasad. He started having... We shouldn't translate hasad to jealousy. And I will talk about that, why is that the case? But when Shaytaan first saw the body of Adam, before the soul was blown into Adam. He said, "You have been created as something which is very great." These are the words of Iblis. He said, "This is something gonna be great." Looking at the body of Adam. And he became very hasud. He started having hasad, okay? Now, what's the difference between hasad and jealousy? And by the way, most likely, this is gonna be in the exam, okay? Is that jealousy is to just not liking what other people have. So, you know, for example, Yusuf here, he's driving a Mercedes, right? $500,000, okay? Man, I'm so jealous of what he has, okay? That's jealousy. Hasad is higher than that. Hasad is, "I wish Yusuf doesn't have the car." So, it's not that I'm jealous of what he has and I want it. I don't even want him to have it, right? So, hasad is a higher level of jealousy, and they're not at the same level. Now, once Shaytaan started seeing that Adam, you know, was created for something great. He was like, "I wanted to destroy him." He started having this idea of, "You know what? I don't like this." Because this creation is about to take a priority over me. You know, this creation is about to come and, you know, and be better than me. And Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala will honor that creation more than me. That's when he get to the second level, or his second sin, which is... What was his second sin? Arrogance. So, first sin was hasad, and second sin was arrogance. He became very arrogant, you know? And then when it came to the point where Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala told him to prostrate. He said, "Nope, I'm not gonna do it. I'm not gonna do it." But it wasn't his first sin, being arrogant. It was the fact that first he got jealous, he felt that he's better. He said, "Why does Adam get that? What do I get? I've been obeying Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala for so long. You know, I thought I was the good guy, you know?" But that led him to be arrogant. He said, "Nope, I'm not gonna prostrate to Adam." And one side point here, and again, this most likely might also be in the exam. That Imam Ibn Qayyim said that the prostration that Allah ordered the angels to do to Adam was not out of worship, but out of respect. Out of respect and obedience to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. So, out of respect for Adam and out of obedience to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. Question?
As you're saying right now, I have the same question I asked Al Alim about that prostration. Because I was like, if all these angels, they prostrate only to Allah. If they prostrate to Adam, it's not like shit. Because you're supposed to prostrate to Allah.
Yeah.
So then that's when I found out that it was just like respect. Like, you know when you do karate? And when you fight your opponent, you like kind of prostrate like a bow? And respect? That's what it was. It wasn't like you sujul or you roqul.
Yeah.
It was more like a respect.
Yeah. It was respect to Adam and obedience to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. And this is where I have to differentiate, okay? Yes.
On the nations before, everybody would prostrate to their prophets, their Ummas, their Dzalqal.
Yes.
But the Muslims, after that point, when Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala said, "Oh, commands them to prostrate to someone." I would command them, "The wives to prostrate to their husbands."
Yes, exactly.
People before used to do it out of respect, but completely sujul.
Not going like that. Good. Yeah, and actually, that, I guess, goes back to your point. This whole karate thing is very debatable, whether you can prostrate, even bow down to the... I guess, to the, you know, your master, or the person who's teaching you, whatever. There's a little bit of debate around that issue.
But what we were saying, right, how Iblis was mad, I mean, Iblis is great, but... I don't know, there's no hundred cities, there's no scholars from the region. Keep saying that, the reason why Iblis was so jealous, because we're saying that, "For the last part, you made me out of fire." I'm glorious more than you.
Yeah, and we'll get to that in a second. Yeah, yeah. We'll get it in a second. One last hadith, and then we're gonna, I guess, jump into the... And it's also mentioned in the booklet, in page 10. Who's gonna read the English translation? Or actually, can somebody read the English translation? It's page 10, who was the binder? Page 10 at the bottom.
In a well fashion, Adam, paradise lived, and as he liked him to read. They did please roam around him to see what actually that was, and he found him hollow from the... He recognized again, he created with a disposition, and he would not have control over himself.
Okay, so Sheikh talked a little bit about that, and I didn't fully understand kind of what was this hadith all about. So, I did a little bit more research. And Imam Nawawi, rahimahullah, he was commenting on this hadith, right? And he said that the fact about the human being being hollow from the bottom is that it's very easy to break. Right? So, the point, if we're the human being, if we're not strengthening ourselves with the faith of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, we could be easily broken. So, that's one thing about Adam as a creation. The other thing too, about the disposition, right? Disposition here, or maybe it's not the best translation, but the word that's used in Arabic, it's ajwath. And ajwath is more like somebody who is... Think of somebody who needs somebody else. And this is very true for the human being, we always need of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, okay? So, I guess the opposite of that, if you will, would be something like as-salatu. Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala is in no need of anybody, right? Allah is sufficient on his own, he doesn't need anybody. But the human being, we are in need of others, right? So, when Adam, as the son of Adam, created like that. We learn from here that Shaytaan is gonna come to us. But we have to depend on Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. And remain on the path of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala for us to be protected from his whispering. And then we go into the whole scene of prostration, and Sheikh, you know, had a really good thing of the scene. You know, you have thousands of angels, right? You know, everybody was there, all the angels were there, a lot of them, right? And then Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala tells all of them to prostrate to Adam. And what happened? They all prostrate, accept Iblis. Like, think of, think of just as far as your eye can see. It's Adam on one side, and the angels are all in front of him, right? And everybody prostrates, except Adam. I remember Sheikh made, "Accept Iblis," he was like, "Allah khair." And the Sheikh made this comment, he was like, "How much arrogant do you need to do it?" You could've just done it, it's like, "Well, everybody's doing it, it might as well." You know? Like, even if you have arrogant, and you don't even wanna do it. But think of the scene. You need so much arrogance as a being, or whatever, not a human being, but as a being, to not do it. And this is how much arrogance Shaytaan had in that specific incident. And also, the other comment here is that it was from that day that Iblis and Adam were like hittahad. You know, because the only two that were standing was what? Iblis and Adam. If all the angels was prostrating. And from that day, think of that enmity that was created just right from the beginning. You know what I mean? And, you know, if we look at the title of the chapter, is where the enmity began, right? Why does Shaytaan hate us so much, right? And it's right from the beginning. He stood hidden ahead of Adam, he was like, "I'm gonna get you." And that's his mission, from the beginning of his, from the beginning of the creation of Adam, ala his salaam. And the other thing too is, you know, that the Sheikh, I'm gonna talk about when obeying Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. Is that any command from Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, there is a reason and there's a wisdom, okay? The reason behind anything that Allah commands us is what? Obedience. Is that Allah said so, we obey. And then Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala will teach us the Hikmah. And in some things, we might not know the Hikmah or the wisdom behind it. You know what I mean? In certain things, we're like, we might not know. But there are other, in most of the big things, like we know why we pray. We know why we believe in the oneness of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. Things like that, we know the reason behind it. I mean, the wisdom behind it. But the reason for any of these commands is the fact that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala commanded us to do it. And do you guys remember when Sheikh was talking about Iblis refusing to prostrate, okay? There is one sin that he was the first one to do it. Who remember that? Go ahead. Okay? Good, good. Explain a little bit more. What did he do to... What was his reason behind not doing it? He did something specifically? Go ahead, go ahead.
He uses reasoning.
Uh-huh.
The Sheikh said, "Some reason will never come to be taught until..."
Exactly, good, good. Okay, so the biggest thing for Iblis is the fact that he used his logic over revelation. Al-aql qabla naql. He used his logic, right? His own logic, which by the way, we find out later, that it wasn't even logical. Like, the fact that he thought fire was better than clay. We talked about this for almost a whole hour, okay, during the class. It's actually not, right? Logically speaking. So, it's not only that he used his logic, even his own logic was wrong. You know what I mean? And that's why some of the many scholars say that Iblis is the Imam of Ahlul Bid'ah. He's the Imam of the people of Bid'ah. Now, if revelation does contradict... If reasoning contradicts revelation. There are three, I guess, scenarios, or three things happened. Or let me move to this one, okay? Can it ever happen where revelation contradicts reasoning? Yes. And if it does, then what?
Reasoning is wrong.
Okay? Go ahead, no. No, go ahead, no. Yeah, okay, so you said... Misunderstood revelation, okay? What was the third one? There are three of them. Do you know it? No? Let's see if... The guy's online as well. I'm not sure if he can hear me. Okay, so we said reasoning is not sound, okay? Revelation is not authentic, okay? And there was a third one. So, there is two things about revelation. One is not being authentic, and second is, I think you mentioned it. You're not understanding it correctly. So, you kinda touched on two points in one. So, yeah. That's not really, that's not really, that probably could fall into all of them. But the three things that, whenever there is revelation that contradicts our logic. It's that revelation is not authentic, we don't have the understanding of it. Or the logic itself is just not right, okay? Like, the logic of Shaytaan, for example, right? He said, "Fire is better than clay." His logic is wrong. It's not actually. We've figured out that clay is better than logic. Yeah, question?
Same thing goes to the angels too. Because when Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala created Adam, besides Shaytaan, where he said that angels themselves, they looked at... Because they got to see what's gonna happen in the world. They asked Allah, they're like, "We all, why are you creating something that's gonna commit bloodshed and everything? You have us that worship the best."
Okay.
And he is disinterested to create Adam. He's gonna sin, and he's living off free will.
Okay.
And then Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala told the angels, "You don't know what I know." And then the angels were like, "What is Allah mean that we don't know?" Then Allah asked the angels, "What are their names?" And then the angels didn't know. And then Allah asked Adam, "What's their names?" And Adam, "We all, not my names." So then the angels realized, they're like, "Oh, we do not know our names."
Good point, but there's, I guess, a missing link in here as well, is the fact that when the angels asked Allah, it was not a question of rejection. It was a question of clarification. And here's where we have to differentiate. Shaytaan, he rejected Allah's command. He wasn't asking, he says, "Well, is fire better than clay?" Like, he wasn't, it's not like he accepted the command, and he obeyed the command, and then asked to clarify. The angels were not like that. The angels, their question was a question of clarification. Not objecting what Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala commanded them to do. So, it's a good point.
That's true what you're saying. What I'm saying is that if patience were there with angels. They would have realized that.
Could be, yeah, it could be. Yeah, sure.
This was your topic, was about revelation, right?
Yeah, revelation and reasoning.
Reasoning. Because the same, like, the same thing goes to Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam during his time. Like, when the guy asked Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam about revelation, a question, and the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam didn't know. But he was impatient. He told the guy, "I'll tell you when I find out." And then Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam didn't say a shawwah. Then Allah didn't give him revelation for four months. And then Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, and then Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam was patient. He didn't go, "Here, my prophet." And what he did, I go, is that, "Yeah, he's not getting revelations, that prophet."
Okay.
When Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam was patient, and he was worshiping, it increases, increased worship of Allah. Then Allah gives him back revelation.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not hearing anything from the people online, so hopefully they can hear me. Yeah, there are few people online. I don't know, we'll see. Hopefully, they can hear us. Because I went on mute. Okay. We'll find out when they reply. And then, so yeah, so we talked about Shaytaan. Okay, now, what were the... I think we kinda touched a little bit on that. Is that what was the excuse of Shaytaan? What was his excuse of not obeying Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala? We mentioned that. Which is arrogance, and the fact that he thought fire is better than clay. Now, did you guys all get the notes?
It sounds working, but there's like...
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Did you guys get the notes? The link of the notes of the... Okay, so the notes, they have, I'm not gonna go over them. But the notes, they have, I guess, the 20 reasons, or however many we came with of how clay is better than fire. I'm not gonna go over it here, because there's just a lot of them. But... So, I guess, whenever you guys get a chance, just review them for the exam. It'll be a really good thing for, before the exam, before we take the exam. Okay. Okay, so the other verse that the Sheikh talked a little bit about, which is, you know, the conversation where Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala tells the angels. There are kind of three things that we can deprive, there, it's in page... I think if we go back. I don't know where it is, but it's one of the pages. I had it here in my notes, so I'm just gonna go over it real quick. Is that when Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala told the angels to prostrate. "Ille Iblis abaa wastakbar." He refused, and he became arrogant. "Wakanamin al-kafireen." There are kind of three points here that the Sheikh mentioned. And I think that also might be in the exam, so I was just gonna mention them real quick. Point number one is that he refused to prostrate. That was his first, that's one sin. Second sin is that he became arrogant, okay? And the third sin, it was at this time, when he became from the disbelievers, right? "Wakanamin al-kafireen," that's the point where he came from, you know, he became from the disbelievers. And Sheikh also commented, and there's just a side note here. Is that when we deal with commands of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala as believers. We have to differentiate between refusing the command out of rejecting it, and refusing it out of being lazy. You know, for example, you know, like, Iyan Kedira Rivas, you know, Subhanallah, we don't, sometimes we miss our prayers. We don't wake up for Fajah and stuff. That doesn't make us, you know, disbelievers. But if we come and say, "You know what? I don't have to wake up for Fajah." It's not mandatory for me to wake up for Fajah. Then we're becoming a little, you know, becoming a little problem here, okay? So, again, for Iblis, he rejected the command, but that doesn't make him a kafir right away. He became arrogant, okay? And he said, "I don't have to do that." It's not only he disobeyed, he said, "I don't have to do it." And that's what got him to be from the disbelievers. And also, the other thing too, the Sheikh talked about how, you know, nobody can say that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala made me do it, right? And actually Shaytaan, when he, when we get to one verse here, he says, "Oh, Allah, from what you misguided me." Right? So Shaytaan even became to the point where he kinda told Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, "It's your fault." Right? And, you know, Sheikh mentioned the story of Umar. When somebody stole, and he said, "I'm gonna cut your hand." He said, "I only stole by the quader of Allah, right? I stole by the will of Allah." He was like, "Well, I'm gonna cut your hands by the will of Allah." Right? So, the point here is that blaming Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala for kind of any mistakes that we do is not the right way to think about it, because again, that's also something that Iblis did as well. Do you guys know how many places in the Quran? This, I don't know if this is gonna be in the exam or not, but it might be. How many places in the Quran where this stories mentioned? You have it, Yusuf? Seven, and what are they, real quick? Sal, okay. This is all in the notes, by the way, so just something for you guys to study for the exam. And I did this, inshallah, we'll leave the last maybe 30 minutes or so. As I was going through the chapter, I built my own multiple choice questions. So, I have about 40 of them. We'll go over it together at the end of the class, okay? But it's a really good thing. I myself learned a lot. Because a lot of times, you go over the notes, like, "Oh, I remember this, I remember that." But then when you actually build an actual question, and think of the possible answers, right? And then you're like, "Oh man, that could be a little tricky question, right? He could have two answers, it could work." But we'll go over it at the end. But if you guys can spend the time with a little bit of the notes, just building your own multiple choice questions. It will really help a lot for the exam. Again, the exam is not supposed to be really hard, but that could be a point of... Okay, so Sutul Baqarah. The story of Adam and Iblis. Yeah, the whole prostration thing, yeah. Seven times, yeah. It's mentioned in page 33 in the notes. In the notes, yeah. You can find it in there. And then right after that, I think the Sheikh start talking about, you know, if fire better than clay. And that's also in the notes, so I'm gonna skip that part. You guys can look over it. And really good thing about it is, you guys know who puts the notes, by the way? Who puts the notes together? Sister Samira, right? Ar Amira, so please make a lot of dua for her. She attended the class in New York. So, she put the 20 reasons that they came out with in New York, and the 20 reasons we came about in Houston. So, you have 40 different ways why clay is better than fire. So please, you know, whenever you guys study, please remember her in your Dha. Uh, she does a lot of work for this, huh? You know what, I actually didn't go over them, but, uh, but possibly. I'm sure there's some repetitions between both of them, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. So now what happened right after, uh, Iblis rejected to prostrate Adam? What was the first thing that happened right after that? Who remembers? Expelled? Exactly, he was kicked out of Jannah, right? And we're gonna get later what happened about this whole, you know, kicking out of Jannah, but Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, "Qal, qala thahbit minha, fama yakunu laka anta thakbar fiiha." Right, get out of it, there is no place for arrogance. And so also another lesson for us is that no one in our Jannah will be arrogant. Right, no one in Jannah will be arrogant. And then somebody might ask, "Well, hold on a second here, what if somebody dies and they have arrogance? That means they don't have, they don't go to Jannah?" May Allah protect all of us, but you know, Zaqalah Khair Yusuf is that you'll be purified before, you know, may Allah protect all of us and not go through any of these trials, but, uh, arrogance is a big deal, so, uh, yeah, so we'll, you know, we'll be purified somehow before we go into, uh, before we go into Jannah. Uh, so that was the number one, you know, he was kicked out of, he was kicked out of, out of Jannah. And, um, the other thing too, uh, we see that in the, in that incident, when Adam made Dua to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. Right, he says, "Okay, give me time." "Don't take my life yet." Subhanallah. So Iblis made Dua to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, and he says, "Give me some time." Right, just, and Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala accepted his Dua. Now, what kind of, so you guys know, we now have three levels of, of Aqeedah, right, or creed. There is, who knows the all three? You know them, you know the, oh, go ahead. Good. Which one did Iblis have? Rububiyah. So Iblis believed that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala was the creator, that's why he made Dua to him. Right, he knows that Allah can accept, okay? But he did not have the other two. He did not have Aqeeh al-rububiyah, right? Is that, he did not obey Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. Okay, and this is a lesson for us as Muslims, knowing Allah is the creator is not enough. If we don't believe and, and worship Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala after we believe in Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. Right, so we believe in Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, if we don't worship Him, then we're missing something. You know, and, and Subhanallah, if we even look at the time of the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, Christ themselves, they know Allah. They know Allah created them, right, they know Allah created everything. They even ask those like, "How about we just worship our idols like once upon a time?" Right, but that doesn't work, you know what I mean? We have to believe in Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, obey Him, and then the third bar, which is believing in His names and attributes, that He is not like His creation at all. And, and again, perhaps, we're trying to get a class in Houston, Insha Allah, soon, that talks about all these really cool things. Insha Allah. Uh, it's called Raise of Faith, with Sheikh Walid. Uh, the plan is that, Insha Allah, Insha Allah, uh, it comes sometime this year, we don't know yet. I promise to not have said that, but it's all good. And that's Khair Insha Allah. Okay, so Shaytaan was kicked out, right? Now, Sheikh talked about, there's a difference between the scholars of where he was kicked out from. Was he from the Jannah that we know? Was he kicked out from a separate Jannah? Right? And basically, uh, some of the scholars said that he was kicked out of the heavens. But many scholars actually think that he was in the heavens as, as we know it, okay? And he was kicked out of it, okay? Some other scholars said he was kicked out of Jannah where Adam and Eve lived. Paradise, Jannah, as in Jannah, yeah. Uh, others, some scholars said he was kicked out of Jannah where Adam and Eves were there. But it seems like the strongest opinion is that it is the Jannah. Right, not a separate Jannah, but the strongest opinion is the Jannah. Um, and the, again, the other, the other lesson here, the fact that he was kicked out of Jannah is what? When we are, the more arrogance somebody have, the distant they are from Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. Right, the distance they send themselves from Jannah and from having, uh, you know, getting there. Um, also, what is the one lesson that we learn from Iblis's Dua to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala? If you make Dua, you'll be accepted? Will be accepted, okay, that's, that's one. There's one, there's another thing, kind of very tied down to what you just said. Think about it. And the guys online too, you guys feel free to interact as well. So he disobeyed Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, it was really bad, okay? Allah said, "You're doomed, man, you're, you're done," right? He made Dua to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. Allah accepted. What does that really teach us? Exactly, and we can never lose hope in Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. That's a very important thing we learned from Iblis, and Subhanallah, we learned that from Iblis. You know, like the most evil being, we learned that from him, that we should never lose hope in Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. No matter what happened, okay? Iblis is the most disobedient being in this, in this whole creation. And yet, he had the hope that Allah will accept his Dua. And Allah did accept his Dua. Now for us, we should never despair to Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. And the opposite of that, it is the most used trick of Shaytaan. Is to make us think, we feel despair of the hope of Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. So Subhanallah here again, we can, we can learn, learn a lot from, from Iblis, la inna Allah. Now, Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, once he accepted the Dua of Iblis, okay? You would think the natural, I mean, you wouldn't think, but, you know, you would say, okay, maybe he will thank Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, so, you know, thank you, appreciate it, you know? He says, "You know what, I'll make sure that everybody goes to hellfire with me." That's it, right away, he says, "Qala fa bima aqwaetani, la aqudanna lahum suratka mustaqib." "From what you've done to me, I will be on the straight path for them." You know, Subhanallah, right after, Allah accepted his Dua. Exactly. So he doesn't, he doesn't say, "Thank you," right? He says, "It's your fault, so for whatever you did to me, I'll make sure that I misguide everybody else." You know? So you, you see here how just he's getting more evil, and Subhanallah, just, let's say a few years before that or whatever, however long, he was the most obedient, I mean, he was one of, with the angels. You know what I mean, so you see how the progress of Shaytaan, just one thing led to the other. And then, this next part is really interesting, which is, he said, "I will come from them, from between their hands, from behind, from the front, from the left, and from the right." And or the two, the two, uh, directions, he didn't say, from up and down, and why? So that was one reason, that's one reason, we spent a lot of time in the class going over this. Good, good. Yes, okay, so there was one interpretation, okay? And that's what, part of it is what, uh, Hassan, okay, so what Hassan said is that, you know, the real leader comes from top, and from the bottom part is who makes the duty. That's one interpretation, and that's what the majority know. But actually, the Sheikh said, I guess the strongest opinion is the fact that when you are in the battle, like Sister said, okay, if you're fighting with somebody, so apparently Shaytaan, we're fighting with Shaytaan consistently. If we're fighting from him, okay, you would think he'll come from the front, or from the back, or from the left, or from the right. You always think that, you will never think that somebody come from the top and fight you. You know what I mean? I mean, no drones or anything, we're just, you know, fighting with swords. And at the same time, nobody's gonna come from the bottom. So basically Shaytaan, he said, "I will come from the directions that they expect." And that's how weak he thinks of us as human beings. Well, I don't know. Maybe, I, I don't know. Could be, I'm not sure. Possibly, yeah. Yeah, that, that could be, but I think, you know, again, Sheikh comment was the fact that he will come from what we expect. And that shows that he thinks we're weak. You know what I mean, and, and Subhanallah, sometimes he wins over a lot of us. Sure. This is the same thing he asked, I don't know. Yeah, because Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala says, right, he's gonna, well, the first part of the Ayah says, "Min baini aidihim," between their hands. Okay, and then he says the four directions. It's okay, just keep going. It's basically when he says, "Oh Allah, protect me from the bottom, the top, from the left and the right," yeah. So he means it there. Okay, somebody, exactly, I don't know who's that person online, but somebody, he said that we least expect from those directions, from the bottom and the, the top. You know what I mean, so I think, I don't know who that person online, but he said, you know, it's not Salman, Salman's actually studying, he has a lot of exams. But, uh, but it could be, it could be the fact that they can come from the, the bottom and the top, but it's least expected. According to the person online, Allah Ha Aalam. Uh, I don't know, but I'll tell you something, for test purposes, uh, if there's things that kind of, you know, there's back and forth and my business, they usually just give two points to everybody. They did that during confidential, there was this one question, I remember myself, one question that was a little debatable, just they give two points to everybody, so. Well, you, you'll find out, you'll find, you'll find your score going up. You know what I mean, because usually people will start, email, I think it's exams@Armaqar.org. Uh, and you, people will, will, uh, either you can talk to the Amir, or for Sister, you can talk to the Amir, and then we reach it up to the exam department, and then they, they'll get to do something about it. Uh, and then one last, one other thing that the Sheikh mentioning about the directions, right? So he said that Ibn Abbas in his Tafsir, okay? He said that the verse about the, the, you know, the sides, the left and the right, and the front and the back, is that from the front, it means doubts in the Aakhirah. And I, I could be prejudiced with this question, it's gonna be an exam. So, uh, I think it's in the notes, uh, and Insha Allah, the questions that I put together, I'll be able to send to you guys. But, um, in Ibn Abbas, he said that from the front side, it means Shaytaan will have doubts in the Aakhirah, okay? From the back, right, Shaytaan will give us hope in the Dunya. Right, you always kind of look back at the Dunya, you always have hope in the Dunya, you get very, you know, delved into the Dunya. Now, from the right side, it means Shaytaan will have doubts in the religion, in the Deen itself, right? And what directions do we have left? The left, and that's basically encourages us to indulge into sins. Right, did I get them right? Yusuf, I know you have them in there. Okay, is it good? Okay. Now, here's really another question too, why would Iblis tell Allah his plan? Thank you, it's very easy actually, um, but Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala already knows his plan, he doesn't, you know, like, it's not like he's waiting for Iblis to tell him. Um, but also there's another thing, which is Iblis knows that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala does not break his promise. Meaning that he cursed him, okay? He said, "Okay, here's what I'm gonna do." Okay, so he himself, Iblis himself knows that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala is giving him the time, knowing whatever he wants to do. Okay, so that's one, uh, that's another reason too. Now, the other thing that we also talked about, right, was that why did Allah give Iblis time? Okay, and there's another one. More punishment, more punishment? Good point too, that's a really good point too, so he did obey Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala, so it's almost a lot rewarding him. Just like, "You know what, you obeyed me, I'll accept your Dha." And obviously he'll have more sins, which will, uh, give him more punishment in hellfire. Loud, I don't know, we'll go over the questions that I have, Insha Allah. Uh, it's three ten, let's take a quick five minute break, and we'll continue, Insha Allah. Yep, I think there's another section talks more about that, we'll, we'll get to it. Come on. Of course. Right here. You done? You done? Oh, Arshad, by the way, did you get the text? There's no class today. Because I don't know if you know, Sheikh Mahmudouh, he had, uh, had surgery on Wednesday. Okay. Had a really big surgery. Really? And, uh, he wasn't sure whether he's gonna have exam, like, a class or not. But he's just, he text, uh, brother Ismail actually texted me. And he said he still has a lot of, he's going through a lot of pain right now, but class will be canceled today. What do you want? I can't go anywhere, I have another meeting to find. Have another meeting to find. Well, we'll get more people online, interesting. Did you guys know about the new, uh, the new study sessions? There are two, there are two study sessions. There's one Kali Ling and there's one Majd Hamza. They're sisters only, so brothers don't show out there. Brothers can only come here. Yeah, 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 this one is gonna go, uh, I'm just, I'm just filling for Salman, because he's, he has a lot of exams, and a bunch of other stuff. Uh, next week, I think Arsalan is gonna be doing it. Uh, and then after that, probably brother Salman. And Insha Allah, one other thing too, we're planning the day of the exam, we're planning to have like a social for everybody. Uh, we'll have like a crash course. And basically the plan, Insha Allah, I wish we have a projector or something, but, uh, the plan is, And basically the plan, Insha Allah, I wish we have a projector or something, but, uh, the plan is, uh, we're gonna have a lot of multiple choice questions, we'll go over them all together. Like a hundred plus or something, from the notes, and we'll just go over it together, Insha Allah. The exam, they give you sixty minutes. You don't, you don't need sixty minutes. Like max is twenty minutes. You have, take it whenever. Ninety? No way. Fifty, fifty to sixty, sometimes, some exams sixty. I've taken some sixty exam, maybe double weekends are sixty.
But Sheikh likes the exam?
Yes. I'm telling you, man, Vakil chilling was very easy. It was extremely easy, you know, and I didn't have, I didn't have any issues with it. Alhamdulillah, I got a really good score. It's my high score in Vakil chilling. Oh man, that was the toughest exam. That was really hard exam, dude. It's just asking very details. That, and I took another exam in a completely different institution. It was very difficult to. Really? Yes, could be, could be. Okay, we'll go ahead and start, Insha Allah. So, um, we're starting with page fourteen, for those that have their binders. And, uh, that's when the Sheikh start kinda looking, uh, going into the story of how Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala warns us as human beings through the story of Adam and Eve, and what happened with Shaytaan, and started where he whispered to them, right? Right from the beginning, once Adam was created, the thing, he started his work. You know what I mean? Like, and that's why we say from day one Shaytaan just takes us as his enemy. And, uh, so he whispered, we all know the story, I'm not gonna go over details, but he whispered to Adam and Eve, and, uh, he said, you know, "Eat from the tree, it's not a big deal." And he uses the same thing, which is what? Logic. Right? He said, you know, "This is a good tree, just eat from it." He uses his own logic as well to convince them to do it. And some scholars, they always say that it wasn't, it wasn't all of a sudden. It was like a long period of time, right? Where he worked so long on Adam and Eve. It's not like he told them one time, and they were like, "Okay, we got you, we'll just go eat from the tree." Right? It took a very long time that he did with them. Uh, and then obviously they, they fell into it, and they ended up eating the tree. And, uh, the whole thing about apple tree, it was not an apple tree. Uh, there is no such, there is not authentic narration or anything that says an apple tree, it was not an apple tree, it was just a tree, as far as we know. And the whole idea of the apple tree came actually from the Israelites, uh, where they said it's an apple tree, but Allah Ha A'lam, what, what kind of tree was? And, and you know, the other thing too, that this mentioned, Surah Al-Araf, where Allah, you know, Allah says, "وَقَاسَ مَهُمَّا" Right? He swore to them, right? He says, he swore by Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, "I am from one of the advisors, I'm advising you." That's when they fell into it. You know what I mean? When he swore by Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And even Ibn Kathir, uh, Ibn Kathir, that's, that was his comment, he was like, "This was the point with the eat from the tree." When he swore by Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, and then, you know, uh, and that's when, you know, the whole story of Adam and Eve left from paradise. Now, somebody might ask, okay, if Iblis is expelled from paradise, what happened? Okay, there are four reasons that we mentioned. If Iblis is expelled from paradise, Adam and Eve are in paradise, how was he able to whisper to them? Right? And they mentioned four reasons in the class of how that could possibly happen. And I'm sure most of you guys have them in your notes. Okay, so he doesn't have to be there, that's one, okay? He took a, okay, if a snake, okay, that's one. Yusuf? You can come and go, okay. It's a third, one, one more. Exactly. So if we take the opinion that, uh, you know, Adam and Eve were not in the Jannah, if they had their own Jannah, then that doesn't apply, because we said the strongest opinion that he was in the Jannah. So, uh, good. Well, there was so many opinion that they were not in the Jannah that we know it, but their own kinda little place. So a separate, I guess, separate Jannah than the Jannah that we know. The Jannah, yeah. I'm not sure, I don't think he went over it in the class, I'm not sure, Allah Ha A'lam. I'm not sure about the part, yeah. But the one, again, the one comment here is that the fact that, uh, the note says it wasn't the Jannah he was kicked out of, it was a separate Jannah. So that, I guess, the opinion goes the opinion that they were not in the Jannah, they were in a separate Jannah. And then, again, uh, you know, Sheikh commented the fact that it was from that time that he became an enemy of mankind, you know? Adam and Eve, they come down, they leave Jannah, and we also know the Hadith that's mentioned in, in Bukhari, uh, where when all sons of Adam are born, Shaytaan will poke us, right? And that's how, that's why every baby cries, except one that was not poked. Is Isa Alaihisalam, good. Another, then another question somebody might ask, was it only Isa or all the prophets? Okay, yeah, some, uh, some, some scholars, they said that it is all the prophets, not only Isa Alaihisalam. Now, why Isa though? Isa is the one that was mentioned in the Hadith. So the Hadith was that Isa Abnamari was not poked, okay? But why? Yes, it's his grandmother, actually, and the Sheikh didn't say that, Subhanallah. It's his grandmother that made the Dua. And this mentioned in, in Surah Al-Aimran, where she says, so was the, you know, the mother of Maryam, she's saying, "I seek reviews in, you know, with Allah, in her and her progeny, and those that came after her," and that was Isa Alaihisalam. And that's why the Hadith, if we put the Hadith and the verse together, it is because, uh, because of the Dua of the grandmother of Isa Alaihisalam. That could possibly be a question in the exam as well. So that, yeah, again, it's a Surah in, in Al-Aimran, Ayah thirty-six. And, you have a question? And the, uh, the opinion that says all the prophets is Ma Minawwir Rahma Allah. So Ma Minawwir was the one that says it's all the prophets, not only Isa Alaihisalam. Now, I think Sheikh goes from there, and he starts talking about how is Shaytaan with us daily? It's in page fifteen, and that Shaytaan is dealing with us on a daily basis. Okay? And he gave examples, there's about six different areas in the, uh, in page fifteen, if you guys, if you guys have them. So, the first one was, we need to enter body when we yawn. We'll know the Hadith of Abu Sa'id al-Khodri. In Sahih Muslim, when one of you yawns, you should try to restrain it from Shaytaan by putting something on your mouth. Actually, the Sunnah, we heard this from Sheikh Walid, not Sheikh Sa'ad. But from Sheikh Walid, it's you take your left hand, and you put it on your mouth. Uh, and then some, some scholars kinda, I guess, said that you can say, "A'udubillah, Shaytaan Rajim." But there's no, there's no authentic narration about saying, "A'udubillah, Shaytaan Rajim." But what we know for sure is, you know, putting your hand, or something, you can also put your arm, if you can do your hand. Uh, so that's one thing that Shaytaan does. And then the second was Shaytaan laughs at us. When does Shaytaan laugh at us? When we yawn, and there's a peace to it. No. Not in Salaah. It, it has to do with yawning. Uh-huh, yes, exactly. So when we yawn, and somebody goes like, "Ah." That's when actually Shaytaan laughs at us. So again, there's a very, there's a Hadith about it. Again, all these guys are in the notes, all these, you know, the Hadith, and who narrates them. And so this Hadith was in Bukhari, narrated by Abu Hurairah as well. And then we know the one about urination, right, for Surah al-Fajr. Oh, that's one thing that Shaytaan kinda plays around with us. Now, the Hadith actually, uh, which is very interesting. The Hadith says that when a person sleeps through the night, Shaytaan will urinate in their ears. Now, mostly the understanding that we know is that sleeps over with Salaah. Salaah al-Fajr. There is another, uh, Sharah, there's another explanation. Uh, some scholar said it is actually from Qiyamul Layl, from praying the night prayers. This same Hadith applies to them as well. But the strongest is the fact that you, that you do it over Salaah al-Fajr. But there's another opinion is what it says, it means praying, you know, not praying Qiyamul Layl, not praying the night prayers, it's just, you know, sleeping through the night. Doesn't mean the Hujud, yes, exactly, yeah, yeah. But again, it's very few scholars, not a lot, but the strongest opinion is that it's Salaah al-Fajr. Salaah al-Fajr, and we just keep it as Salaah al-Fajr. It's not gonna be in the exam. And the other thing too, you know, when we hear the Hadith, we're like, "Ay Allah, it's disgusting." And that's the point, right? It doesn't mean, like, you're not gonna wake up the wine's water in your ear. No. But it's just the fact that you're, you're supposed to feel disgusted and wake it, wake up for Fajr. And then tries to eat with us. What's the, what's the story there? Got something there? Okay, there was one, there's another one. Left hand, okay, good. Something else. You guys need to go over the notes. I have the notes in front of me, that's why I know, so. Okay, that's, but it has to do with eating itself. I'll tell you, so, uh, there was a Hadith in Missah Sahih Muslim, where the Pro Sallam says, "If you were eating, and you drop food, pick it up, clean it, and eat it." And Subhanallah, this is something that Sheikh talked a lot about in the class, especially in the West. When you drop food, you throw it away. He says, "Don't do that." Because then if you throw it away, it goes Shaytaan. So pick it up, wipe it off, unless it's like dirty and you can't eat it, then you just don't eat it. But if you can, uh, if you can eat, just clean it up and eat it. And he also connected the whole point of how the Pro Sallam used to lick his fingers. That's another thing too, leave nothing from Shaytaan. Yes, yes, okay, yeah, okay, that could be it too. That could be it too. I don't, I, it's not, it's not in the notes here, it could be some other place in the, in the notes, but it's not here, but yeah. Because then I think it was one of the companions that Shaytaan taught them how to say, uh, Surah Al-Kursi. And then the Pro Sallam said, you know, he said a truth while being a liar, right? That was, was Abdullah bin Asaud? Could be. I'm not sure, I'm not sure. And, uh, lastly, there are two more, which is entices us when we're alone with the opposite gender. We'll know the Hadith, when a, when a guy and a girl meets alone, uh, Shaytaan is their third. And does that apply to physical meetings only? No. Phone, social media, Skype, Tango, whatever you use to communicate, that also applies as well. Almost Allah, the people online are pretty active, good. Uh, and then lastly, we have, you know, Shaytaan tries to ruin our prayers, uh, by whispering and all that. When does Shaytaan stop? When does Shaytaan stop working on somebody? When he dies? And we all know this, who knows the story can tell us, we'll go with Mam Ahmed. Sheikh talked about it a few times. You know what? Okay, Yusuf, go ahead and say. Yeah, so, I think, uh, not sure if he said it or not, but he was asking him to say Shahada. To the son of Mam Ahmed, Say Ashadu Ala Allah. And he said, "Nayyad, Nayyad." He's like, "What's wrong with you, Say the Shahada, you know? You're about to die." He was like, "Nayyad, Nayyad." Because Shaytaan was telling him that, "You run away from me, I couldn't get you, oh Ahmed." So he was telling Shaytaan, "Nayyad, Nayyad." And then I think, very, uh, just a few more pages. Uh, the next part is, what's the difference between the enmity of mankind and the enmity of Shaytaan? Okay? So the enmity of mankind, real quick, there's a lot of, there's a lot of notes about it, so you guys can go ahead and, and do it. But the enmity of Shaytaan, how do you protect ourselves from the enmity of Shaytaan? It's one thing, simple. You guys know what it is? A'udubillah, Shaytaan Rajim, that's it. From mankind, there are three things. Who knows them? And they're mentioned in the book indirectly. In the verse verse, make it very easy. It's a page seventeen, verse part, like, top left. The enmity of mankind. Okay, one, that's one. Yeah, you missed the first one. Forgive them. So let's say when somebody's giving you a hard time, you know, forgive them, that's number one. Number two is, right, what more, you know, advise them to do the good. And the third is, if there's not, not stopping, just leave away, just leave them away. And that's basically how we differentiate between dealing with the enemy of mankind and the enemy of Shaytaan, the enmity of Shaytaan. And then, you know, there, I mean, there are a lot of verses that were, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is telling us when, you know, we're dealing with mankind, when they're giving us problems, just always give them something better. You know, uh, you know, for example, what Fabilita Ahsman, you know, when somebody does something bad to you, repel in a better way, you know, in the best way possible, when it comes to the dealing with mankind. Uh, and same time, the verse, you know, good and bad are not equal. And that's basically essentially the, you know, the Sheikh is trying to say here is the fact that when we deal with mankind, it's not like Shaytaan. Yes, we're gonna have, we're gonna have some friends who tell us, "Hey, let's go to a bar, you know, let's go to the hookah bar, whatever we want." We'll have friends who tell us that, right? Don't just say, "A'udubillah." You know, like, "Stay away from me, dude." It shouldn't be the, you know, the immediate reaction, it should be other things, you know, forgive them, advise them, and so on, and so forth. Okay, um, you guys should have this in page eighteen. I, I get, I just wanna leave about twenty, twenty-five minutes to go over the questions at the end, so, uh, just go through eighteen real quick. What is the wisdom behind the creation of Shaytaan? There's a lot, there's a lot that we have here, uh, just, people just throw it out. Ya Allah Bismillah, who's starting? What is the wisdom behind the creation of Shaytaan? Go ahead. Good, okay, that's one, that's one reason? Okay, so Tawakkul, right, you know, having Shaytaan in there, we trust Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, okay? What else? Good, really good point. Okay, so, I, you know, going back to the first point is that the fact that we're struggling through Shaytaan, it gets us closer to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So it's a struggle, okay, good? So it's a struggle, okay, good? Mm-hmm, very good, it's a really good point, and, uh, you know, the fact that we have Shaytaan around, and he was good, so we should never feel safe, like, "Oh man, I only do this bad sin, it's not a big deal." Shouldn't be like that, we should always think of our sins as something huge, right? And, uh, you know, Ma'am Ahmed used to say, you know, "I did not feel safe from falling into evil until the last breath." Or nobody should feel safe from Shaytaan until the last breath. Jazakallah, another person online, he said, "To seek forgiveness from Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala." Right, connecting that when we commit sins, when we do something wrong, just like Shaytaan, we should just feel safe about it, we should seek forgiveness of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, which again elevates us as well. What else? There's a lot, I mean, Subhanallah, Sister Samina had like fourteen different reasons here. I don't know where she got them from. Really good, yeah. Subhanallah, I mean, he was a really, he could've just, he could've taken his life right away, right? But Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is accepting his Dua, he says, "I'll give you, I'll give you, you know, I'll give you time," right? Okay, good. What else? Okay, good. Good. There were a few other things, he just mentioned them real quick in the, in the book. Uh, she said that in the creation of Shaytaan rests many aspects of worship, right? And through his story, you know, for example, patience and all that, like, the brother that was here. Mentioned trust in Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, we can also learn that through, uh, it's also a sign of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Right, the fact that he, you know, has Shaytaan around, it's a sign of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala's creation. And also, you know, uh, Subhanallah, we can learn a lot of the names of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, understanding the names of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala through Shaytaan, right? Through the story of Shaytaan and what happened with Shaytaan as well. The other one we have here, and this is probably the last one, is, uh, we learn who's in control. Even Shaytaan is the most evil being, he knows who's in control. He's not in control, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is in control. And so I made Dua to him, you know what I mean? He could've just said, "You know what, I'm good, I'm not gonna die right now." No, no, he, uh, you know, he trusted Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, and he knows that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is in control. Last, uh, last one online here is, "Do appreciate the good and see the evil," right? If we don't have evil, we won't appreciate good. It's a really good point, too. Okay. And then page nineteen. We, we talked a little bit about that, uh, you know, why was he given time until they've judgment? You know, trials for, for us, it's a reward, Brother Arshad said, it's a reward for his previous deeds. He was obedient for a very long time, right? And this to increase the sins of Shaytaan, so he gets punished more. Oh, there's a really good one here, yeah, I think number four was that Shaytaan has been left to be the parson of all the evil doers. I mean, uh, again, learn from his evil things. And then I think the last, the last section we have here is, what's gonna happen to Shaytaan at the end? We all should know this. He's in hell fire, obviously. Okay. So we have about twenty-three minutes. Uh, I wanna, you know, I can send it to you guys. I don't have a pen, but I should be able to get all your emails. I'll send you the questions I put together. We'll go over it together, you know, today. And those who are online, uh, please just feel free, just comment with your questions. I know there's like a few seconds delay, but please comment with your questions and, uh, or your answers, I should say. Okay, Bismillah. Some of the questions are pretty easy, we're just like, "Ah, duh." But some other questions are a lot more specific, and there's stuff in the middle, okay? Uh, first question is, and let's just do like, raise your hand and then answer. First question is, "Who said most certainly Iblis was not from the angels, however, he was from the angels when he came to his behavior?" Is it Ma'am Ahmed? Is Ma'am Taimiya? Umar bin Khattab? Or Ma'am Nuh Qayyim? Abba Taimiya? You guys agree? You don't know? Like, "I don't know, Anne." He's probably right. Okay, you're all right, if I'm Abba Taimiya. I don't have chocolate or anything, so, just, uh, just, good job, I guess. Okay. Um, who was the first created? Who was created first, Jin or mankind? Jin, mankind, both at the same time, we don't know. Jin, okay, that was easy. Iblis from the angels, true or false? False, okay. When Iblis was obeying Allah, he was better than the angels. True or false? Why? Why? Free will, I kinda said that, it's really good. I think this will be an exam. You know, because a lot of people might think, you know, Iblis, and of course, angels are better. But when he obeyed Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, he was better because he had a choice. Or the angels didn't really have any, they don't have a choice, okay? Um, Iblis obeyed Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala for a short time before disobeying him, true or false? False. He just, he obeyed him for a very long time. Blank, used to say, "You have been created as something which is very great," as he was talking to the body of Adam before the soul went into it. Jin, angels? Okay, Iblis, alright. Okay, uh, this is gonna be pretty quick. But we might leave early today. Yeah. Uh, okay, Hasad is, number one, wanting something that someone else has. Number two, wanting something that someone else wants and wanting Allah to take it away from them. Number three, wanting something that someone else has and wanting, and wanting Allah to take it away from them? All of the above? Okay, good. You guys see that, you see two on three? And, and by the way, Sheikh mentioned this a few times in the class. And by the way, so everybody knows, this is not from the exam. These are my own questions, so if you see them, Allah and Sheikh did not talk to me, I have no idea what's in the exam. So if any of the questions in this comment, Alhamdulillah, but I have nothing to do with the exam. I'm just saying it. Okay. Allah created the body of Adam and then the soul, true or false? It's true. Okay. Uh, Shaytaan used to, Jazakallah, okay, good. Inshallah, I'll send you the, send the Excel, it's an Excel file, you just open it up and everything is in there. And you will find that the questions are bolded, the answers are in italic. You should be able to figure out the answers for the most part, but it's in italic, so you know. Shaytaan used to stay at the body of Adam for hours and inspected, true or false? And inspected. Inspected. Good, it is true. Somebody was hesitant a little bit. And even, you know, we know the Hadith that he used to go inside and kinda go around and see, and that's how we find out everything was hollow from inside, right? Because we are hollow from inside. When Allah told the angels to prostrate to Adam, the prostration was a prostration of worship and respect. Worship only, respect only, neither worship nor respect. Respect only, okay, good. What was the second sin that Iblis committed after Hasad? Was, okay? I guess these are easy questions, Anne, alright? I hope so, Anne. When Allah commanded the angels to prostrate, he told most of the angels, all of the angels, some of the angels, whoever wants to prostrate. All of the angels, okay. And by the way, guys, wouldn't you go over these questions? If you find the wrong answer, please let me know. Please, please let me know, I have to know. So I'll let everybody know. And for those who are online, can you please comment with your email? So inshallah, I'll send you the... Oh, by the way, only those who attend today will get these questions, not the whole class. So, uh, so please comment with your email. Unless somebody wants to pay for it, then maybe. Just kidding. What's the only reason that Allah gives for making the angels to prostrate to Adam? Number one, he commanded them. Number two, he wants to test them. Number three, he doesn't give a reason. Number four, none of the above. So I heard two brothers here, they said, "Because he commanded them, that was the only reason." You said to test them? I was, okay, okay. So, what's the only reason that Allah gives? What's the only reason that Allah gives, okay? For making the angels prostrate to Adam? He commanded them, he wanted, he wants to test them, he didn't give a reason, none of the above. He commanded them, okay, third person? He did not give a reason, okay? Thank you, good job, really good job. So again, some of the questions will be like a little tricky like that, uh, but it is to command it, and that's, Allah said it very clearly, you know? And, and we have to differentiate between, there's some things that scholars extract, extract from some of these verses, but others, they're just very clear in the Quran, right? So we also have to differentiate between these two things. Okay, why didn't Iblis prostrate to Adam? Here the answers first, okay? First, because he thought he should be prostrated to. Number two, because he's not from the angels. Number three, because he thinks he's better than the angels. Number four, because he thinks he's better than Adam. Good thing you guys are, uh, this is good, Alhamdulillah. Um, as a result of Iblis's action, many scholars say that Iblis is the Imam of hypocrites, disbelievers, people of innovation slash Ahrul Bidha, all of the above. Ahrul Bidha, good. And, and again, the reason for that is he uses this logic over their revelation. Yes, yes, that was mentioned in, in the notes as well, yes. Okay, sound reasoning will never contradict authentic revelation, true or false? There are two key words here, sound and authentic, right? Because if you don't see authentic here, then question, okay? Sheikh, the Sheikh is very Aina when it comes to these questions, so make sure you read the questions. Okay, if there's a contradiction, then the following is true. Number one, the reasoning is not sound. Number two, the revelation is not authentic. Number three, your understanding of the revelation is not proper. Number four, it's a perceived contradiction, when there is no contradiction. Number five, all of the above. I heard one answer only. We just went over it, bro. All of the above, yeah. I mean, yeah, the three and four are mentioned as one bullet point, and I just split them. Just for confusion purposes, but Alhamdulillah, I guess, they get confused, deception. Okay, scholars said that Shaytaan was the first to use Aql over Naql. Okay, he just said that, okay, yeah, so this is true. Who remembers the four, the seven places where the, this story of Iblis is mentioned? And not Yusuf. Somebody else. You guys should have it on your notes, or remember it. You can do that note, you just looked at it. Look at somebody else. Okay, we, I guess we'll throw them out, okay, so Tahaa is one. Baqarah is two. Ali Amran is not. Al-Kaf, okay. Al-Araf, four. Wusitahah. Saad, okay, two more. Hidr, one more left. What's the surah after Kaaf? Before Kaaf, I meant. Surat Isra, Surat Isra. Nah, Amariya, Surat Isra. So Baqarah, Surat Al-Araf, Surat Hidr, Surat Isra, Kaaf, Tahaa, and Saad. Make sure you guys have this. Logically speaking, fire is better than clay, true or false? When Iblis refused to prostrate to Adam, he made Dua to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, which shows which type of Aqeedah? Robubiyah? Uluhiya? Both? Neither? Asmaan Safat? Robubiyah, good. Uh, I don't know if the Sheikh is gonna give definitions, but I think he probably assumes that we know. He might not answer this type of question, because again, some students are beginners, so they might know the difference between, but, uh, we never know. Allah kicked Iblis out of paradise when he was arrogance, when he was arrogant. Let's fix this. This shows that no one will be allowed into paradise if they are arrogant, true or false? But then Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says, "Only Sirk cannot be forgiven." So, if somebody's arrogant, it's not a mushfiq, he can still go to Jannah. I will mention this, this is just to read rate, uh, the ones online. Oh, good, the ones online are commenting, that's good. Good. Okay. This one is a little tricky. Why didn't Shaytaan say that he won't come from the top and the bottom? Number one is because he can't. Number two, because he thinks that the top and the bottom won't affect the children of Adam. Number three, because we anticipate him to come from all directions except top and bottom, and he will come from them. Number four, because he sees us very weak, so he will attack us from where we expect? Uh, three and four? Or one and three? That's not a trick question. It's three and four. So basically, I mean, three and four, so four is more an explanation of three, right? Because we don't expect it, and, uh, and we anticipate it, right? It's kind of the same thing. You got a question? So, uh, we also talked about this, hopefully you guys still remember, in the Faisir of Ibn Abbas. He said, "The four directions mean what? The front means? Doubts in the Aakhirah. The back? Hope in the Dunya. On the left side? Doubts in Deen, good. No, no, the right side isn't doubts and sins. Okay, I have to check back the notes, in case... You guys could be right? Give me one second, I just have to check back the notes, in case the notes have a mistake. If it's my mistake, then, then Khala is just my mistake. Okay, you guys are right, good. So right will be the, you know, doubts in Deen, left will be sins, okay, you're right. Let me just fix it. Fix it here. But not best. Just a few more questions, and then we'll end it, inshallah. Why did Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala allow Iblis to boast and say all of this? Number one, so we are aware of his plan and take heed. Number two, to increase him in, in punishment? One only, two only, one and three, uh, one and two? The Hadith of the Shaytaan touching us when we are born, except Isab bin Maryam, why? Because he was a prophet? Because his mom was a virgin? Because his grandmother made Dua and sought reviews in Allah from Shaytaan? All of the above? One and three? One and three, I hear the three brothers, you said three? Okay, so, the question says, "The Hadith." It says, "The Hadith of Shaytaan touching us." So that's referring to the Hadith. That means it's only? It's only three, okay? But it doesn't say the Hadith, then, uh, hopefully the Sheikh doesn't ask us these very, uh... See, I don't know, it's, oh yeah, true. So, inshallah, the question, the, the question should not be that tricky. I hope so, inshallah. Okay, "One of the reasons that babies cry when they are born is poke of the Shaytaan, true or false?" When is Shaytaan ready to enter our body? When we go to the bathroom? When we eat something? When we yawn, all of the above? It's really not that tricky. Yeah, you're, you're all right, you're all right, it's when we yawn, to enter the body, it's when we yawn, okay? But he does other things as well. But again, the question. Saiton laughs at us when we yawn with sound, true or false? Saiton urinates in our ears while we sleep, and we don't pray with Salaah? Does that apply to other prayers, too? No, I was actually thinking about it, I did a little bit of research, I couldn't find out, does it apply to other prayers? Like, somebody comes from work, okay, and do you sleep through all prayers? Like, comes like before Asra or whatever, do you sleep till the night? Does that apply to them as well? The Hadith says the nighttime, but does it apply that Saiton urinates throughout the day, Allah A'lam? Maybe we can ask Sheikh, next time he shows up, or maybe Ask Sheikh Waleed or somebody. Okay, according to the Hadith of Imam Tirmidzi, when a man and a woman are together, their third is... The choices are pretty funny, just to take a laugh at it. The Hadith above refers to physical meetings only, true or false? We're mentioning social media, phones, and all that. What are the three steps taken when dealing with the enemies from mankind? Number one, show them forgiveness. Number two? Advise. Number three? Turn, turn away from them, okay. What should you do when something comes from Saiton? The sin of every human being goes to Iblis, true or false? The sin of every human being goes to Iblis, it is in his record. Last question, who's... Why, man, you trying to protect them or something? It's like, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't take other sins? I don't know, Myra Allah, I don't know. It could be. Again, really good question. Honestly, if you guys have these type of questions that you're studying, write them down. And next time, you know, we have our next instructor, even Sheikh Saad itself. Insha Allah, we'll be able. Last question, who's the most rewarded person on Day of Judgment? Prophet Adam? Prophet Isa? Our Prophet Muhammad, all the above? Alright guys, Jazakumullah Khair, this is the end of it.